All right, let's call it meeting order. Potawatomi County Board of Commissioners and county government for 30th, 2020. It's going to call for a call please. Mr. Stackhouse?
Yes ma'am.
And this is Ms. Harris. This man. Call Stan please. Blaine. All right, guys, please. Dear St. Louis Father, we thank you for this wonderful day that you've given us. We thank you even though it's Thanksgiving's Day for all that you do for us. The love that you show, the blessing you give, the help. We just ask you, our God, in times that we're going through now, we just ask that you watch this nation, prepare the new president, your Lord, and we pray that he seeks your advice in all that he chooses to do. Be with our troops, Father, as they protect us. They're away from their families, giving us special blessings. We just praise you and thank you. Holy name. Amen. Mention physician.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry for such a small run, but.
It's too late, Rob.
Hey. We've got some guests with us today. We have Rachel Milo and Shawnee Ford. You have the name, CEO of Shawnee Ford. Welcome, Rachel. And I'll let you state your name.
Rochelle Erickson, there are numerous managers for the city.
All right. There are a lot of good things.
What was your last name then?
Erickson. U R I C. Erickson.
And Mr. Whitman?
Harvey Whitman, Department of State.
All right. There are a lot of good things left here as well.
Welcome.
Of course, everybody else has been here, so. Your name, sir?
Liz Anderson.
Okay. All right. Well, welcome, everybody. Hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving. All right, update from Public Safety Center. I think she's going to answer before. Thanks for listening.
Yeah.
A date from Environmental Deputy?
Over the last month, fifteen hundred and eighty pounds of discharge on the one year road. A lot of refrigerators this month. Six tires. Got to keep moving, do themselves work and active, active, but working three other.
All right. Thank you. Number seven, consideration action regarding revisiting previous items requested for purchase through the JAG L L P grant. That's Scott.
Commissioner, this is on Zoom. I apologize for not being there. I am almost sick again. So the reason I asked this, to put that back on the agenda, previously you guys approved for us to apply for the JAG L L P grant and you agreed to front the money for the purchase of radios, which is noted as eight handheld radios. In return, if you may see with award that might be back through the county government once those radios are purchased. After the meeting, some, in the grand days it was afterward, as you all know, we're dealing with vehicles outfitted. The sheriff and the sheriff had determined that we had some malfunction with radios inside of our vehicles. They are not usable, so our meeting has changed from dealing those eight handheld radios to four, portable radios inside vehicles and to handheld radios. We're still purchasing radios, but because it was a change in what we originally discussed, I felt it was appropriate to bring it back to let you guys know that our request was changing. All the dollar amount is still just below the $10,000 range and we are awarded that money to cover that first, so those radios. E O has been requested by June and we had a discussion, bring it forward to you guys to discuss changes before any action was taken as far as a purchase goes.
So are you putting four inside the vehicles or are they temporary or permanent?
They're permanent radios. We had, apparently had four of those malfunctioning equipment that we had in vehicles. So we're needing to replace those. We still have a need for those eight portable radios, although we don't have funding to buy those. But because of, you know, it's obviously safety and in-car radios get out way better than handheld radios, we saw a greater need the sheriff did to adjust our request to purchase those four radios for in-car and, you know, we can get two handheld radios instead of eight.
So we're getting four permanent and two handheld?
Yes, that is our request.
And is it all the same vendor?
Yes, and it's state contract, as I discussed with you after the original meeting when we requested two more quotes. I discovered they were state contract and I had that discussion with many of the business and provided that to Stephanie at the county court's office.
Okay. Do you have a copy of the state contract? I have to go back and look, I don't. Just get us a copy of the contract, Scott.
I also provided it to you, to you, that's it.
Great. Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to change it from like handhelds to four permanent vehicles and handhelds. Thank you, Scott.
I'll second it.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Stackhouse?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Harris. Yes, ma'am. Number eight, consideration action regarding approving Pleasant Grove public schools to utilize portion of their self-study fund pay for the retained portions of their safe room project for the following. Gosey Construction, twelve thousand eight hundred sixty-two thirty-eight. A C S, excavation LLC, two thousand eight hundred sixty-two sixty-seven. M T Von Construction LLC, three thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars, seventy-two cents. R S M Development, three thousand six seventy-four thirty-three. Will Joel Interiors Incorporated, seven hundred ninety-four and five hundred twenty-nine. Is that two separate, yeah? What if it's two separate? They are two separate, yeah, okay. Plumbing and Mechanical of Oklahoma, one thousand one hundred fifty-five and forty-five cents, nine hundred and fifteen dollars, and Lacy Electric, two thousand seven hundred thirty-six forty. Why is this two separate ones on each of these?
They do different. Like the plumbing and mechanical, they'll do the A C on one and then the plumbing on the other. Will Joel, they'll do the paint, but they'll also do the E V. And that's two different.
And this is the last request on this, right?
Hopefully.
Well, is it, because we never approved this to begin with.
I know.
Okay.
We've already gone through this, I mean.
I know, but you said that was the last payment paid.
Yeah. Look, and here's what happened. Our impact aid money that they say would come in in September hasn't come in or it would have been paid through that time.
Okay.
And you can see, I've given you what, the school's been responsible for paying it.
Right. I don't know very fast.
Yeah.
Okay. And you have a copy of the beat and everything. I do. You have any problem with it?
I don't. Nothing, no problem.
And I did put the statute reference in there. That second page of that.
And we got it approved by Stephanie before we finished the deal.
Well, then it's perfect. Now, the only reason I was saying that is because of when we first originally approved you guys using your money, we only approved a certain amount. And our policies usually would say that before you ever do this project, let's approve X, Y, Z amount. And then.
The total project.
Yeah, for the total project. And I understand things happen, but. Okay, the motion is to approve.
You want me to approve all of them?
I mean, yeah, approve all of them, I mean, they don't have to create it. And I will second it. Real call. Mr. Stackhouse?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Harris. Thank you. Number nine, presentation of CARES Act money economic development grant program by Rachel Milo of Shawnee Ford.
I don't really want any of that. Yes, ma'am. But I'll give you guys, this is in draft form, so if for some reason it's not out for everyone in public. But you may have seen recently the news for Oklahoma City releasing fifteen million dollars of their CARES money to create a small business relief fund. That small business relief fund, Oklahoma City is getting a ton of coverage and helping Oklahoma City hit the top ranks. It's great places to do small business. It's helping them hit some national lists as a use of their CARES Act money. So as Melissa mentioned, I'm the new CEO of Shawnee Ford and one of the things we talked about is how do we, at Shawnee Ford, continue to fight for our businesses in the whole county? Not just Shawnee, but all of our region. And so what I am proposing and putting together is a partnership between our cities and the county to repurpose some of the CARES Act money that you've received to create a small business relief fund grant program. I have modeled this program off of some other cities that are more our size. So Stillwater has completed one, Ponca City has completed one, Duncan has completed one. Those were released mostly back in October. I didn't get to Shawnee Ford till August, so here we are nearly December. But what I'm asking for, and I have visited the city of Shawnee, who intends to partner with us on this as well, is would the county and the city and any of our other cities within the county consider repurposing their CARES Act money to create a relief grant fund? And the city of Shawnee is considering this and intends to contribute fifty thousand dollars to the fund. I am asking the county to contribute fifty plus, depending on what you have in your budget and would be able to reallocate. But this grant would be that, it would be a grant. In Oklahoma City, they have fifteen million dollars and they're offering grants of up to one hundred thousand dollars. Stillwater had half a million dollars and they awarded up to five thousand dollar grants. They are also probably going to launch another one right after the first of the year for another half million to do grants again. They found it to be super successful. I spoke to their economic development directors in all of these cities and did some lessons learned from them, if you will, and things they wish they would have done differently in the application process and then tried to apply that to our grant program. The reason Shawnee Ford is willing to administer this is because, one, we have the capabilities and two, it's a lot of burden to actually issue the checks and do the application process and have a committee, et cetera, and that's a lot to ask from our city and county governments at this time, but Shawnee Ford can take that on. Stillwater, for example, has a three-person staff and they actually fulfilled their grant request of a half million. They had them fully granted. They received applications, granted them, and submitted the money within a period of like three weeks. And they said it was just overwhelming how many people in the middle. So we've taken some of their lessons learned to create our criteria, which I've provided before you. What we're looking to do is provide a grant program that is at least a hundred thousand dollars. So fifty came from the city, we're looking for fifty from you for a first round with grants up to five thousand dollars for qualifying small businesses with an investment plan to counter COVID pandemic challenges. One of the changes we're making versus most other grant programs so far is rather than base it on loss, we're actually basing it on staying open. And that's a real shift from any other grant in the state of Oklahoma so far. But actually Stillwater told us that once we do that, they'll probably model their second one after what we do because they really think this, this approach allows the businesses that are continuing to invest to be helped and not have to prove loss during a certain quarter that may not have been their high time or low time to receive the loss, right? This would be for businesses fewer than fifty full-time employees and an annual gross revenue for 2019 less than two million. The business must be located within Potawatomi County limits, must provide evidence of being in business March through October. And we put proof of being in business versus proof of being open because we also know there are some small businesses who closed their doors to the public, but then found ways to continue to do business either online or an e-commerce option and we don't want to discount them. The business must demonstrate changes made and changes planned to help the business sustain during the national emergency. Provide a detailed budget of how the expenditures will be used and the return expected. Must provide proof of good standing with Oklahoma Secretary of State. There's also a criteria that the task force will be given to help gauge and evaluate the applicants because we know that the Oklahoma Secretary of State is one metric for showing that they're in good standing, but we may have somebody in services that doesn't have sales tax, so it's hard for them to show their good standing if they're not a taxable service. They must provide their sales tax records from March through October, but with that said, we know some won't have that and we don't want to overly penalize them either. But we also know that sales tax generates all of our operating funds as well, so it will be one of the criterias of judgment, but they won't be disciplined if they don't do that. Provided W nine, and then lastly, complete a 90-day review and testimonial document. And this we looked at as, again, another way of being able to tell our story that our counties and our cities contributed and that's why it's a great place to own a business or run a business in our area. And so then that also gives us kind of that follow-through in public publicity. The suggestions and ideas on here for qualifying application expenses, these were simply just ideas so people could think outside the box on ways that they could apply these funds. So it could be that you have to invest in technology to work remotely and we think that that's a wise investment at this time and, and we want to show support of that. People who would be ineligible to apply for, in round one, we just want to eliminate any perception of any favoritism whatsoever. So Shawnee Forward board members, Shawnee Forward employees, the city of Shawnee commissioners and the Potawatomi County commissioners would be ineligible to apply for any business that they are majority owner in. And then we've given you what the grant application and award process would look like. Again, most of the communities have said that this is a really quick process, but yet it is laborious and hard to ask the government officials to do that. So Shawnee Forward is willing to be the facilitator. But we have designated a task force of people from around the county to participate in the first round application review and then make a recommendation to a representative from the county, each city that's participating, and myself to then do the ultimate sign-off.
Thank you.
And so I'm putting before you this idea, this grant program, within the ask of your partnership and participation and looking at it as serving our whole county versus just any one city.
And you did speak with Mr. Commissioner Thomas as well.
I did, I spoke to him and his only question was, why aren't you asking for more? In true form.
I had hoped to speak with you as well, but. I think it's a great idea. Now, are you going to, how are you going to determine whether they get five hundred or five thousand? Or is it just strictly five thousand?
So this is still in working order, but what we took from the Duncan Economic Development Director Group is that they had a rubric that they determined in advance to weight each of the criteria for submission and then we'll use that rubric to determine how much they get. And the idea here would be to give people as much as we could give them of the five thousand as often as possible. I am also a small business owner who has gone through the process of applying for grants through the Department of Commerce and the SBA and quite frankly, it was so laborious that I could see why a lot of people maybe didn't do it and weren't able to take advantage of it. And so we don't want to make it so difficult that, you know, one of our small businesses couldn't do it just because they don't have a staff person to apply all that effort to pack it. And so if they can, if they can demonstrate that they've either used money to make significant changes and/or plan to use money to make exchange, investment, we want to be able to offer it to them.
Is it one time?
This will be a one-time, one-time application unless we grant it all and we decide that it was such a great program for our county and then we do a second round. As of this, it'll be one time.
So the million-dollar question is if you get, you got twenty, twenty-five applicants, you just going to write them and say which five?
Yeah. Yeah, and then put them on a scale. And so in all honesty, we, we aren't publishing who our task forces so that they don't get approached or hounded on that so that they can, they can do that kind of behind closed doors and do that. We, I did hear from one of the communities that did this, they filled, they completely spent their half million in ten days' worth of applicants. And so I fully expect we'll receive all the applicants. As of right now, if, if you make a decision to invest and the city of Shawnee makes, that'll give us enough to start the phase one program. And we'll determine an open date and we will only open probably about two and a half weeks with the idea that if we can close it by the end of the year and review the applications in the first two weeks of the new year, we'll be able to grant checks in January.
And how are you going to get the word out?
So Shawnee Forward does have partnership with most of our local chambers, so we can communicate to our chambers. We would ask that each of our city governments share it through their network and then we have a pretty extensive marketing list as well as Facebook followers, et cetera. And then we would go to our newspapers also to ask them to write stories.
I got a question, though. If the city denies the tip, then what?
Well, I'm fully anticipating this, but yes.
There's a what-if in there.
Yeah, there is a what-if. And so what if then we'll just have to go with whatever you grant at first? But we're also starting the conversations with Seminole and to see if they want to participate as well. And so just kind of continuing outside of our immediate circle, this is coming together pretty quickly.
No, we was. That was like, well, what if?
Yeah, sure, sure.
And when I visited with Rachel about it, as far as our guidelines, what we can do for the city, obviously, we've received our CARES Act money. We did the resolution to put it into a separate fund. That way we could spend it as we so choose. So with the auditors, if it is not a follow-up, I just would have, I would, if we choose to do this, I'd rather write the check, send it to Shawnee Ford and let them hand out the grant money. But I would like to follow up.
A recorder?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're hopeful too. That's why we're actually putting in the application that they're required to do a 90-day recap with us because several of the communities told me that they fully anticipated that people would do that and then now they find it really hard to get people to do that. And in my experience with even other grants, sometimes it's hard to get the follow-up, so we're making that part of the grant application process.
A representative from the county wouldn't, I don't know. Probably.
Yeah.
Whoever you guys would designate, yeah.
I have a question. If Seminole does decide to participate, how are you going to break it up? And are you going to, you know, that the county is going to need a lot of help.
Right. Right. Right, we would help them facilitate their own.
I think it's a great idea. I quit, go fast. I mean, I'm.
Yeah. Yeah.
Easily.
Yeah, I know, and that's one of the reasons we decided to set up a rubric because some communities simply did first time, first serve. And just knowing, you know, if it releases on a Thursday, that puts some people at an advantage. If it releases on a Monday, it puts others at an advantage. And so not just doing straight out first time, first serve, but actually kind of evaluating and giving a little bit of weight to people who have a brick and mortar location, a little bit of weight to people who pay sales tax allows us also to kind of diversify the investment too.
Great. All right, thank you. I appreciate you. Okay, number 10, consideration and possible action to approve CARES Act money economic development grant program. She has spoken with Randy, so. I think you gave your question to her. I think it's a great idea.
And I kind of need to keep telling students, one of the local numbers in Washington. But. You're saying that.
Well.
I hope everything works out the way it should, so.
Well, are you recommending that you give a little more? You recommend this, this is fifty and then if the program is a success.
In that way, I was, I was like, I need to go through the hundred and fifty-one part. I'll get back to fifty. I hate to see the program fall, just for the business's sake, so.
So if you want to go through up to one hundred, then I could either backfill as much of that or they can add to you either way.
Yeah, totally.
I think that's a good suggestion. I think it's good, it also shows the city and the county to put some pressure on. I mean, it's not, not in a negative way, but it shows that everyone's working together and, once again, so.
This will be the first community to really kind of pay it outside of the city limits and do more of a county approach. In fact, I think is really important. And the, and the city included into a county-wide initiative. It's not something that always is either.
It'd be a good pilot program. So. Want me to make a motion or do you want this?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to take some of the CARES Act money, a hundred thousand, to Shawnee Ford.
Up to one hundred thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
To make the economic development grant program with our CARES Act money. And then whatever happens with them, just let us know. And I will second your motion. So we have a motion and a second, up to a hundred thousand dollars. Real call please. Mr. Stackhouse?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Harris. I guess we need to state, we have over a million.
Yeah.
I mean, it's public knowledge. We got, we received over, uh, little, just a little over a million and we've used it to buy a lot of our PPE stuff. We used it to buy the storage containers out here to store PPE in. So this is another great. Could you be real call?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number 11, consideration action regarding corrected minutes of November the ninth. I forgot what those were. Okay. I found an error in there. I have deviled on something that was approved because the item came on the front and it was on the back and I had to correct that. Rochelle Scott, what it was and what the new minutes were like. It was the, when you bought the product versus when you bought the.
Yeah, it was the same.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for the.
I'll second it. Real call. Mr. Stackhouse?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Harris. Number 12, consideration action regarding minutes of November the sixteenth, 2020. Number twelve, consideration action regarding minutes of November the sixteenth, twenty twenty. Real call. Mr. Stackhouse?
Yes, ma'am.
Consideration action regarding monthly report of the sheriff. That throw you off? November's already over.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Real call. Mr. Stackhouse? Number fourteen, consideration action regarding transfers of appropriation. Number sixteen, consideration action regarding blanket purchases. I didn't have a problem with my local.
We're in motion.
Uh, yes, I'll make that motion. Have a motion and second. Real call. Mr. Stackhouse?
Yes, ma'am.
And sixteen, consideration action regarding a resolution to permit a temporary transfer of funds for the treasurer. You know the, that you see every year on our financial statement that maybe gives us or it shows to head out of the highway. I'll second it. Real call. Mr. Stackhouse? Number seventeen, consideration action regarding a memorandum of understanding between the citizen Potawatomi Nation and Potawatomi County. Did you talk to Art? I mean, I talked to him. He came in and filed his, uh, registration to vote.
Yeah.
And basically he just said these were roads in Potawatomi County that they were putting on their inventory. But I.
There's been no contact with that stuff. Rock Creek Road tomorrow.
I don't know. I was taking the, I was taking, I shouldn't have put it on my schedule. Eighteen, consideration action regarding physical year twenty twenty-one COVID nineteen safety protocol modification of physical year twenty-one, regional security extension contract with Board of County Commissioners. Nega called me on this. And this were just some extra COVID. Provisions for fitting in play.
I'll make a motion to the protocol.
I'll second it. Real call. Mr. Stackhouse?
Yes, ma'am.
Number nineteen, consideration action regarding purchase of a two thousand and eleven Chevy Tahoe in number one GNLC two E D. Bureau two VR two two three two four nine. The ten thousand dollars from the Asher Police Department or the Sheriff's Office. Uh, this is one of those two, the first of two vehicles they're purchasing with a twenty-four thousand dollars or of the deduct for quite twenty-four thousand and some odd dollars. I don't remember how much it was.
Yeah, it was all that interest money that we're using. We're gonna buy two and still one.
Have you found the second one yet?
No.
Okay.
Pretty good shape? Is it in pretty good shape?
Yeah. They just buy the new one every few years for them, so it's probably the only one that's drove it. They're very good shape. We're gonna use it for CIB, you know, about two thousand and four, that one of the CIBs that are getting cost more money.
And it's ten thousand even? What is the number of vehicles? Where are we at on that? What, where are we at on all the vehicles behind the courthouse?
Brownson just probably they got approved, so as soon as they get that bill, it'll, I'll have it out by the first of June.
Okay. I'll second it. Real call. Mr. Stackhouse?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Stackhouse? Twenty, consideration action regarding elevator maintenance contract with Tanae. I've looked for it. I don't have a plan. You didn't get a copy?
What about maintenance, the door and the lane and the thing?
Door operating and landing. What's, what's going down? Additional maintenance items?
I'll make a motion to approve, come on.
Mr. Stackhouse? Real call. Mr. Stackhouse?
Yes, ma'am.
Twenty-one, consideration action regarding selection of a newspaper to publish county's legals. We just interstuck with News Star. So it is now the countywide for three months. Four? I'll second it. Real call. Mr. Stackhouse?
Yes, ma'am.
Twenty-two, consideration action regarding canceling the December twenty-eighth for the County Commissioners moving. I think a couple of other things are going to be on. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Real call. Mr. Stackhouse?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Stackhouse? Yes, ma'am. Twenty-three, consideration action regarding approval of OMA certificate for compliance for Equis Agriculture Incorporated, Skydance Ranch LLC, Backwoods Cannabis Company, Stoned H Farms, Gan Cannabis Farms LLC, High Wire Farms LLC, and True Sixty-three LLC. That's the highlight of my Monday morning. I put all these names on. Mr. Two. You've got three of them?
Yes, ma'am.
I've got three, you've got two, and you've got three. And you have seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
I'll make a motion to approve all seven.
I'll second. Real call. Mr. Stackhouse?
Yes, ma'am.
Public comment. Do we have any public comments today? I'd like to welcome both Rochelle and Tony. I guess you guys have been part of the crew. You just now moved title.
Congratulations.
And we are, we closed off applications today actually for our emergency management director. So we will have that on our next, probably agenda or will there be a special meeting so we can start our NPD process? So hopefully we can get some money. Guys, I'll work close together, but welcome. That's please say your name. Steve Mason probably sees, glad to see you come on board. Yeah. Any other public comments?
I got some.
Oh, okay. All right. Consideration action regarding purchase orders and planning.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Real call. Mr. Stackhouse?
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, guys, for coming.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Real call. Mr. Stackhouse?
Yes, ma'am.